Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call the November the 6th meeting of the Town Council. The order in the first order of business is a very sad day for all of us seeing nothing. I'm going to ask Councilmember Joe Connors to say just a word. He served the longest with Councilmember Matt. Joe?
We lost two men when we lost Billy. I'm not sure I ever remember not knowing Billy. He grew up on Depot Street. That house was on Depot. I was in Forest Avenue in the baseball field when the community was, or the neighborhood was beside his house. He was the same age as my older brother. So we grew up together and then we were able to sort of on the board for a number of years together. Philosophically, we weren't always that close, but professionally, we could understand that and work through it. And I think Billy always, as we all hopefully did, always had a sound judgment in his heart. Whenever he would be making decisions, he was a good citizen. He had raised a good family. Hardly had a good life. Billy, back, you'll miss him.
Well said, Mr. Connors. Okay, so just a few seconds of just silence. Ready, set. Thank you. As I hope we're doing this in a fast word. Let's raise the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under our own and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the next order of business is the adoption of the November the 6th Town Board Agenda. Uh, councilor, did you want to mention something there before we start this public hearing?
Um, Mr. Mayor, the only thing, I think we didn't get the public hearings only through UDO amendments, there's some proceedings.
Of course.
One other thing, and I know there are quite a few folks here who talk about this in the hearing, that they don't feel pressed, uh, having to do with how they get, I recommend that to the majority.
Sure. Okay. Do I hear a motion to adopt the board, the council agenda as presented tonight? Is anybody having changes first? No changes, okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt as presented. Second? All in place. Next is the approval of the October the 2nd Town Board minutes. Uh, everybody have a chance to read the minutes and if anybody have any corrections or comments that being done, I'll entertain the motion to adopt the minute that's been sent through. All in place. All right, I have five minutes after seven. We have a public hearing for the event venue ordinance, so I'll declare this public hearing open. Councilor and Mr. Satsur, are you going to give us an overview? Did you want to say something prior to that, sir?
I would, it's in the way of an overview about the purpose of public hearings and procedure of getting them. Apparently, there's been some confusion about the procedure. I have provided you each with the relevant statutes in proportion to UDO, some are simply not by UDO, so if you got them in front of them, I just want to run through very quickly. 168-387 is basic state statute about adoption of a zoning ordinance for amendments thereat. And what it says is that before adopting the initial zoning ordinance, a board like this has to, telling the planning boards have time to consider any public public hearing on until after they give the recommended ordinance. After that, you are required to forward, prior due to the total public care, and also forward any amendments to the planning board for consideration and recognition back to you before you proceed. What the statute says is that if the planning board, if it has thirty days, don't get a recommendation back within thirty, it will actually proceed. By giving, nothing stalls out indefinitely forever and ever again, the planning board, if it's something that this, we're feeling legislatively is a necessary change in the zone. Um, that is, doesn't carry that within thirty days. You don't have to wait thirty days, you just have to have the response from within thirty days. But I will tell you, we always have given them at least thirty days. I mean, if it's introduced here and forwarded to the planning board in one meeting, they got at least thirty days before the next meeting. If the planning board hasn't made a recommendation, we do have the option to file and have anything changed. We don't recommend that. We often have them wait until they get already the foreview of a recommendation. In fact, that's what we've done with both of these, we did not go directly to the hearing at the next meeting. But what changed, I think caused some confusion is that, and the next document I've got there for you is an ordinance that Alderman adopted in 2004 that eliminated what was in the UDO as a forty-five day, a forty-five day habit. They, they changed coming from the planning board, had to leave before it that far ahead of time. And that's not what the law said. It says, you know, give them at least thirty days since to think about it. If you don't have a recommendation thirty, thirty days ahead. It said that we had to have this in front of the planning board so far out that if I brought your, I brought your change tonight, you'd forward it on to the board, the planning board, they could hear it, you could send it, and then you couldn't act on it until G. So just taking way too long, not anything that's actually required by law. So those are the changes that have been made. The last document there is in the codified version, I know, that makes clear that there isn't this protracted waiting time. Having said that, this board has and often takes as much time as it needs to consider whether or not it makes an, sorry, an exception, why is it? That's the process and follow this, the one change in the UDO, it's all hundred percent is what we're thinking. And as to the substance of each of it, I think we'll, we'll cover what we got there.
Good evening, council. Yeah, this is an event venue that's a text amendment to our UDO, section one fifty-two zero ten, uh, one zero C and one fifty-two point zero two four, uh, which is our, under the permitted uses. An event venue reads as a commercial establishment and associate grounds engaged in the hosting and production of pre-planned events, including without limitation weddings, parties, corporate events or reunions. Typical accessories uses includes kitchens or mills, preparation space, limited overnight accommodation, photography studios, facilities for culminating libraries, recorded music, on and off parking, and outdoor recreation facilities. This is, this would be, is supposed to be allowed in C1, which would then be also allowed in T2, T3, and industrial. It comes also with some special requirements. You can see in your text, I'm not going to read off all of them, but there's seven requirements, off everything, from hours of operation. The main one is actually the hours of operation, that the activity shown up takes place between the hours of midnight and seven AM. And the main reason this has come up is because we've had some issues with types of businesses in town that, that go late, three, four in the morning, and we have no reason to have them stopped. So this is the way to try to have a set time, so residents aren't calling, you know, end of day calls it nine-one-one, police department, and even the mayor, he calls it all hours of the night, every, every night of the week, weekend, or someone. And of course, the residents, it's their safety and mobility until they have a, just a peace and quiet at night. So this was sent to the planning boards, the planning board viewed it in September. They actually reviewed it once and then had it, and change, reviewed it in August, reviewed it again in September, had some changes that Delph and council made, and this is the text that they've sent back with what they, they have voted on and approved for recommendation of approval. And you should, in your, in your package, you'll also see the, their recommendations with their findings of fact, and this is the text.
Okay, I do have one person who signed up to speak. Who's more? Angela Moore, who's going to speak to this public hearing.
Thank you. I've got some concerns about the language, particularly for the definition of an event venue and the zoning allowances. The way that event venue is described, I want to make sure that the board is aware that they would be restricting anyone who, say, had an old estate in town that wanted to occasionally host weddings or small parties, venues, those types of things, they would no longer be allowed because they, if they were in a residential zoning. While we do want to be considerate to the neighbors, we may be shutting out business opportunities or occasional usage of residential property for profit-making events, essentially. In addition to this, I did have some concerns with restricting, say, the number of guests. The maximum number of guests shall be in accordance with the maximum occupancy of the principal structures determined by the fire marshal or fire chief. This is assuming that a venue is primarily indoors and that all people would be indoors all at once. So again, we may be restricting potential business by keeping people from allowing guests past the number that they have the ability to occupy inside a structure. And, and a final remark on the hours of operation. While people most certainly shouldn't be causing significant hardship or disturbances to their neighbor in the middle of the night, what businesses do inside their structure without disturbance to people around them really isn't any of our business. So I, I would, I would really encourage the board to reconsider these items in this ordinance before, before passing it. Thank you.
That's the only person I have signed up to the public hearing on this issue. So I will, no one else is supposed to speak, I'll declare this public hearing over. All right, next is the public hearing for the apartment two-family dwelling ordinance, and I'll declare the public hearing open. Uh, councilor and Mr. Satsur, if you're up again, sir, if you will give us an overview.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sure this is, um, if this means, if I included this thing, if I stand by, I quote, as far as it pro forma, and I'll tell you why. The definitions of dwelling, kind of apartment and dwelling two families were susceptible to confusion from one another. The way that they were stated, an apartment was just one on top of another. So if you had duplex and only had two dwellings, which is explicitly allowed in an R1 dwelling area, if they were on top of each other, you might confuse whether or not that was a new apartment. There was an argument. I don't think it was a particular winning argument because the whole thing is zoning, and what we just talked about in terms of where somebody ought to be able to cite a certain kind of business, is compatible uses, put the most compatible uses next to each other. One thing might not be good in a residential zone, we're trying to keep it quiet, keep the number of people that live in that area to, to a reasonable level. By that logic, a, a duplex is specifically allowed in R1, and it makes sense because the point is, it only allows two families to live in it. It's a very low level, low intensity use for a residential area. So I think that was really the intent of allowing that this multi-family, this two-family dwelling within a R1. We had sought to clarify by just moving it out by saying, well, the apartment has at least three dwelling units in it. We're not worried about configuration, just about the number of people who are using it in a building. I think that that was, that could have been the interpretation that you may have used to try to follow without doing this, but this does remove any doubt.
Yeah, I just think of what John said, it's, that was, in a sense, it was, this was the confusion, and it's telling me that a structure could meet both, both definitions. And so that's why we thought the change, to have this definition change, which is, it's a change to section one fifty-two zero ten, which is our definition for dwelling apartment, simply change it to a structure of at least three dwellings. So we don't worry about if it's on top of each other, or if they're beside or anything. So that's the change, and it's for the city planning board, they reviewed it, and seemed like they, they recommended it to be approved with their finding of fact, which is in your package, and to the consistency statement in their report.
All right, we have one person signed up to speak at this public hearing for the two-family dwelling ordinance, Mrs. Moore.
Well, I am absolutely in support of giving people back the ability to use their residential properties as they see fit. I, I do have some concerns at the speed of which this has been pushed through and with what effort. It certainly raises the question as if there are other motivations. I also am very concerned about the language here. Currently, the language used for, if we say an apartment is three dwellings or more, that means that apartments are allowable use in, I believe, either C1 or C2 and above. So that means that a tripleplex or a quadplex, which I think, if I recall, are allowable in residential uses right now, would no longer be allowable because they would be considered apartments. And apartments are not allowed in residential zones. So this language may actually effectively allow some small measure of freedom being given to the people, but at the same time, take away even more. As far as this being pro forma and that perhaps the double definition was an accident, I recall when we passed the UDO, raising that specific question, do we really want to outlaw apartments, one unit above the other, someone turning their basement into a rental unit from the code? And I brought it up with a board member then, who's also a board member now, and both them and the current town planner assured me that that was intentional. So it, it was not by accident, and I would encourage the board to relax these laws, but I would encourage them to do it with intention and to be careful of what the language is changing the law to, and know exactly what you're passing. Don't pass it simply because it sounds good. Do your homework, do your research, make sure you know what you're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Moore. Okay, no further, I have no one else signed up to speak to that public hearing, I'm glad, but, okay, the next is public session, we have a number of people signed up for public session. Just part of the ground rules, public session comments, all due to five minutes. And the first is Rick Westerman, and I think he has an associate with him. Welcome.
I had sent a letter to Mayor Ball about a project that Habitat's working on, Operation Christmas, and what it simply involves, that we're taking care of ten families in Texas that were devastated by hurricane between Beaumont and Fort Arthur, and we've got ten families in Florida, in Seabreeze, Florida, that were devastated. What we've done is, we've got twenty trees, twenty lights, twenty, they're going to have everything delivered to them, they have enough, don't worry about Thanksgiving Christmas. But we've asked the Aldermen, you know, Silva and Franklin, and the commissioners of both towns, we have people in store to vote. On December first, at the new chamber building, we're going to have the five trees, the stores competing against each other, my construction crew, the board, and the office staff, all decorating the tree, and they're up, for public display right now, being voted on. And we wanted to extend an invitation to the Aldermen and the mayor, they come look into trees and vote on that unit. And that was one of the things that, what, what, I thought was right. And that's what we're doing. Normally, we would run our disaster team down there, but there is so much, so much devastation. Five of the families in Florida lost everything but the turks on their backs, and the other five won't be in our home for two and a half to five years. So the last thing we wanted to do was have them worry about Christmas, so we took a little relief off. It's only twenty families, but we felt it was the most we could do. And both my counterparts I've talked to, when we pick the families, have been in tears every time I talk to them, because nobody from the rest of the country is even following these little towns. So again, it's going to represent Franklin and Silva.
Several years ago, Franklin adopted a little town called Bayou La Baca, and we sit back to train there. I'm just wondering if there was something that maybe our community could do as towards adopting one of those, maybe, maybe we need to talk to him.
We're not just going to be Christmas, we're talking, we're probably going to send our crews down there.
We actually, we actually sent people on chartered buses to provide Christmas at Bayou La Baca. It was a wonderful experience.
This is our, this is our, our, I put it in the back, Angela, I wanted to invite you on December first, the chamber.
Any questions? Anybody?
The chamber building, on, it's Friday night, December first, I think it's five thirty.
Thanks to five thirty. You'll let me know if that changes, ninety dollars.
Oh, I am, I'll keep you pressed.
That's a wonderful line. Thank you.
Show us the sign.
And one of the other things is, we got a deal with a light bulb company, that they've been sending us light bulbs that we sell for a dollar a piece, the LED light bulbs, and so far here, they've been raising thirty-five hundred dollars for high prices.
Super good. Thank you so much. All right, the next speaker, pardon? All right, the next speaker is Fallon Diamond. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I guess I'm a frequent visitor, and I'm here about the same issue. I'm here to talk a little bit about the, the water house on, in my neighborhood on Hillcrest Avenue. I've just got a little bit of state and I like to do simple, funny things. I think I've pretty, maybe, interested in these things, I moved from here three years ago. I purchased an older home on Hillcrest that the family needed repaired. I spent many months and maybe a hundred thousand dollars in the house. I believe so, the value of the house increased instead of tax value. The neighborhood benefited as did its town, Franklin, and the local trees' property. Now, I put that house on the market for sale and purchased another older house in the town near us. The house has been badly neglected, missing the roof, for years, and requires a great lot of renovations. Again, the neighbors have been looking to them. I've actually had the neighbors stop by and beg me for lipating my store that's in my home. And again, the town will benefit on a number of levels, including the property. I listed my house on Hillcrest for sale about two months ago, and have been disappointed that very few people have asked to see it. There have been a lot of drive-bys and a lot of phone pictures on the phone, but when they come, have to actually see the property, it's, it's, I've got a real long time with it. Just two days ago, a couple looked at my house and were extremely interested, and told their agent they would not consider making an offer because of the, the water house down the street. Clearly, this is, this is effectively financially, I'm forced to carry two houses, one which should sell quickly because of the fixings of your mother's house. I called Justin Satsur a few weeks ago to ask that the town police replace the gate that now was on the ground, given people who passes a full, people in shameful property inside. I explained to him I was having negative, it was having negative effect on my efforts to sell my house. He said, look into it, and I think he came up. He also said the issue is still being reviewed by the courts, after I've been assured earlier that the courts have approved their rule of reoccupant, the amendment wish of property. At this point, I'm not sure that any residents affected by this issue have been given a completely accurate accounting of the status of the property, which concerns me very much. Since my efforts to have this property remediated have achieved nothing, I would advise to seek legal representation on my behalf of it, if I am so negatively affected by this situation financially. I prefer to sell this and the, the town of Franklin. I made every effort to give this steward of my properties and it is sensitive account. I'm imploing you to correct this situation to the benefit of all the residents in our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. The next I have signed up is Ms. Patilla. Welcome, Ms. Patilla.
Well, I'm talking about the same thing that she was. I'm here on behalf of several of our neighbors in our neighborhood. We have a situation in our neighborhood that is just the plug, that's all I can say. It's uninhabitable, it's a health hazard, and we really do need help in getting something done. Now, I was there for some to talk to Justin today, and I'm real pleased with what he is trying to get done, and I hope that all of you will get behind him and expedite the situation. It's, none of you would live beside it. None of you. And we have people that have to because it is their land, decided they have no other place to go. So it, it's an eyesore. It's going to have to be up to the town, but the owner will not do anything with it. The house has been condemned, if I'm, if I'm not wrong, I think I'm right, it's been condemned. And it needs to be, if it's, before it's torn down, or before it's burned, whatever you need to do to it, please humiliate first, because none of us want those little creatures coming around in our yards, in our, in our yard. But it's, I hope you will look, be serious about it and really do something about it and just soon, because it's, I was on the board for eight years, and it was discussed then, Joe, if you remember, we discussed it and nothing was done. And I can blame, I'll blame myself too, I was right there. But that's, enough is enough, and the buck needs to stomp. And any of you just need to go by there and look. It's, trash is everywhere, the gates are down, there are rodents, there, it's everything. And it's that one house in the entire neighborhood, and I grew up in that neighborhood, and for seventy-seven years, I have never seen another house there in that type of condition. Everybody is taking care of their properties. So you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer, but, and we left our pitchforks at homes, but we do have them.
Does the board show that now or we can wait so?
We have, we have some slides, second. Does anyone else that's here and speak on this public session?
Here.
Yeah.
Your hair is more.
Okay, I have Gwen Taylor. Oh, yes, are you going to speak on the same issue?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Uh, Ms. Moore, what were you going to speak to on this?
Something different.
Yeah, we're, we're discussing, I guess what I'm trying to do is, we were discussing right now the situation on Hillcrest Avenue, and we have some slides, so you'll come right after. Do you want to try to show those slides, or shall we pass on that?
If we could just continue, because I think Mr. Satsur has the audio up, but we do have an update.
Okay, so Ms. Taylor, we're back to you now, I'm sorry.
That's what I want.
These electronic things have a way of slipping in on you.
Thank you. I'm here representing the Streets of Flint Compared to the Association, which the merchants may appear in Franklin, here on Main Street, on Back Street.
Yeah, that's wonderful, thank you.
First thing I'd like to do is thank you as the town for coming in the beautification of the street for the fall decorations, they were beautiful. And we have quite a few of our merchants here tonight, that they came in and they decorated the front of their stores, the inside of their stores, and we just thank you for what the town did. But the next thing, I know it is on the agenda a little bit later, but the next thing that we're really here for is the street parking, and we understand there's issues with the And we understand there's issues with the street parking here on Main Street. I mean, that's not deniable. But we want to let you know that whatever is decided, it does affect the merchants here on Main Street. We want to support our town. And we ask that you support us. And by doing so, is to help keep us informed of what's going on, so you don't hear what he said, she said, and whatever by the wayside. You know, there's always the, you know, your side, my side, and then there's the truth. So we want to hear firsthand, and you will be seeing us if, as long as that's on the agenda, you will be seeing merchants here because we are very concerned and we're very interested.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Hahn, Gary Hahn? Welcome, sir.
I'm here tonight to speak on the noise ordinance. And I know that it's come up. I know it's not on the agenda. But we are in a situation not really too much unlike what Cissy is. I have owned a rental property on Town Mountain. And it's an investment property, and I felt good about it when I bought it. But now, across the street from my property, the situation's deteriorated. And it's gone really into the gutter. And the property itself isn't a hoarding situation or a road situation or anything like that. It's a noise situation. And the noise goes on, two, three in the morning, especially on the weekends, it'll go on. It just really goes on until they finally, I guess, maybe pass out. Because we've also noticed that, exactly, there's several cars that come and go. And it's typical of, or you could say stereotypical, maybe drug activity. Because it's just one car comes in and one car goes out, one car comes in and truck goes out. It just goes on till three in the morning. The neighbors in the area call the police, the police chief, whoever they call you at night, I'm sure before. And, and, and they can't do anything about it. There's no nor is a witness, so they have, their hands are tied. And also, for I, I think one good benefit of a noise ordinance would be if, if the police come up to a situation like this and they are aware visually of drug activity, they can act on that. They have, and they have due cause or whatever. If, if they can, I don't know if they can smell marijuana or if they can, I, I know it's the same thing with a traffic stop. They can act right then. They can, can make some kind of action. And, and that's what we feel like everybody around the house and everybody's concerned about is not only is it most likely a very noisy situation, ongoing, running the property values down. I mean, they're down, every house, the houses around it, three hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. My house is low on totem pole, I'm like a hundred and thirty, if I could get it. But I can't get it because somebody would come there and they'd see all these cars parked and they'd see, if they were ever there past five o'clock, it'd just be this booming bass. So I urge the board, this can, I guess, I haven't been to all these meetings, but I, I assume it's been kicked down the road quite a bit. I'd urge the board to put this up for a vote. I, I don't think it's, it's so technically impossible to enforce a noise ordinance, I mean, to, to write a noise ordinance and then have it. I mean, this, we're not breaking new ground here. There are noise ordinances in several communities. And I just think, I, I'm here tonight to urge the board to vote a noise ordinance in so that our police can have something to act upon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, the next person on the list is Ms. Moore. Angela Moore.
I know that tonight, the board will hear from the people doing the Christmas parade about street closings. And I just wanted to bring it towards attention that for those of us who live on the north side of town, as well as anyone living in the Maui area, the current Christmas parade route creates a access difficulty for anyone wanting to get into town or in the south of town. In that it blocks off at one point or another, every single access from the north end of town into town short of driving out to Sanders Town and back in. You know, there, there may be some really back ways to come out in Cartugie over there. But there, there's, there's just not a really good solution coming in from Twenty-Eight North to get into town or get past the parade. It's not just a matter of avoiding downtown for those couple of hours if you're not interested in the parade. It's an issue of not being able to get south of town either. Because, you know, Main Street is partially blocked off. Intersection Harrison Avenue all the way down to Depot Street. And it, and it does create a decent partnership for the people who are out there. Every year, I, I myself or my neighbors or someone tries to drive into town in one of those areas and they get stuck waiting for an extended period of time or they just simply have to turn around and go home. So I, I don't know if it's set in stone yet or if it's something that has to be changed for next year. But I would ask the board to consider a route that would allow people from the north end of town to easily get into town.
I think there's a question. Are you aware that's not a town, that's Chamber of Commerce?
But the town is the one who closes the roads.
And they're replaced.
Yes. So I, I'm, I'm asking you to consider road closings that would allow access from the northern part of town.
And I think that was an issue that you might want to take up in Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. I'm asking you to keep the roads open.
And, and we hear you. We hear you. Understand? Certainly. Okay. The next person on the list is David Fellpepper. Welcome, Mr. Fellpepper.
Thank you. Greetings and salutations. I've been enjoying the new Ingalls like I think everybody else has. That's a really nice thing to have, is coming to Franklin. Belden Circle, the bridge on Belden Circle, I know it is slated to be replaced. I don't know if there's a plan out, if any of you have seen the plan for that bridge. But all the people that walked to the Ingalls when it was in Westgate Plaza are still walking to the Ingalls. They're using Roller Mill Road to get there. I would like to encourage, or somebody from the board or Mr. Mayor, to encourage the DOT to incorporate a walkway on that new bridge or a bike path on that new bridge. Because they're all funneling down from Orchard View, the new apartments right on Roller Mill Road. They're walking down there and they're crossing a one-lane bridge right now. I know it's going to be replaced to two-lane. If we had some forward thinking, we could put a walkway on that bridge. Maybe eventually sidewalks on the west side of town. That would allow people who are, who are going to walk anyway to at least walk safely. Thank you.
You know, that bridge was built about the same time I think the town bridge was built.
It's pretty old, yeah. I mean, is there a plan out yet for that bridge? Has anybody seen it?
I've not solved the plan. I do know there's discussions within CDOT, but that's something I'd be glad to have this management take.
Does the town have influence over that type of thing?
Yeah, it's actually pretty high.
Oh, I, I mean, it, it has to be. It's, it's, it's kind of tumultuous down there. Anyway, a walkway on that bridge would be great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. That is all the people I have signed up for the public session. Just a little more, I don't know. The first item is the board action on the event venue ordinance. So any discussion from the town council? Anybody want to discuss it from council? All right. I'll entertain a motion then. Council, you will provide us with a motion.
Favorite.
Oh, excuse me.
I mean, we can discuss that promotion in a second, but I'll go ahead and, so it's, it's for commercial zones only. And so it, it, it helps the residential, just the cause of, but it's not designed to affect it. It, it, it's not affecting the residential zone, correct?
It, it defines the use and says that it clearly belongs to the seat order higher. So if, if the council were called, when we first started talking about this, we looked at our options of to make this a police power ordinance, it says this is, you know, dangerous to health, safety, welfare, and approach it from that, that approach. And I'm not saying we, you could pass this and also look at whether or not you need something of the nature of a nuisance ordinance that would approach it. This is an attempt to define the use and from a, from a residential zone. It's not guaranteed to be in fantasy.
Remove it from a residential zone. It's not designed to be enforced in a residential zone.
It's not, that would not be used permitted unless you get the scene.
Is this not an attempt to be able to regulate noise by not being a noise ordinance?
Well, I will tell you that there are several ordinances that this is based on. That I drew on to a resource. And all of them had some sort of a noise component of it that said, you know, if you have this use and it's in this place, part of how we know whether or not it's being compatible is you can't have a volume over X amount. And that, it referred back to a, some sort of noise. But this one doesn't. It does not. We don't have it on that place.
Do you have any questions?
I've been told us to say too, this more about how their space, how it would be affected and they tend to view that for space. And they're being regulated by, I guess, the door guard.
Simply something we could look at. Again, the ordinances that I drew on use the, the, I, I think, I think it's safe to assume at some point, people are largely going to be concentrated in the neighborhood. And we're saying that, you know, don't have more than are safe to have occupied that. I think it's a shorthand for, for how we can know whether it's a safe tracks people for commercial reasons or is it, is that unsafe? But again, not, not the only way to do it.
Somebody feels comfortable with this. Well, I do. I feel comfortable with it. I, I feel like at times it's, it's a start to trying to overcome a problem, a serious problem that you can't.
The newest problem about the noise.
Well, you've got to get rid of problems too, when you've got people flooding all over the town streets. And they've already exceeded the fire marshals. Numbers that are provided in this high building. I say, was that a problem?
We have.
We get a fire.
But not we are able to force fire marshals.
I'm not sure whether we can or not. We try because then that's all we do have. What the fire marshal has on the option. We have nothing else that we can. As I'm saying, there's nothing else that we can do really, other than what the fire marshal says. If they're confined to within that, that venue.
Is that the situation?
Well, we, significantly, there are a lot of people. It's, 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 it is a problem. It is a problem. Chief?
Yes, sir.
We really can't do a whole lot, Tim, unless we call the fire marshal. It looks like they're overcapacity.
I think the fire marshal falls under the county guidance. Is that correct?
He does. He does. He's not a, a, a. Okay. Any other comments? Concerns? Councilor? Was that just with a motion?
Well, we need to offer that, you know, consensus of council here. Again, as I said, we're getting preface all of this to see if the county council is not comfortable with it. You can take the conversation with you, I'm sure you are comfortable. So it's, it's the law of the council to see the proper mission of things. Adopting a lunch as presented as well as the consistency statement. Drafted before you were taken mattering, considering the means of regulation.
Well, my concern is I keep hearing this is a try and attempt. But I'm not hearing that it's a full fledged, this is going to take care of the issue. So to me, it sounds like we need to be careful of that a little bit more. Where it is a, this is going to take care of the issue and not this is a try or attempt to take care of the issue. Because if it's just a try and an attempt, you're going to be right back here again, trying and attempting to add something else on.
Well, we've also got the ability to look in conjunction with this down the road into using decibels. They are admissible in court. I guess we could, if you wanted to, we could table it. We're right back where we were. But sometimes you have to start with the first step. If it's a good step. I don't see that it's a bad step. Well, I do. Okay. Then you make a motion to either adopt it or, or table it or to just do a label. Yes, you certainly may.
I don't even know if there is such a place, but supposing you had a large enough property so that you could have a building on it. So you're not disturbing anybody and you wanted to have a party at one until two AM. Would there be any way that a person could get a exemption or permission to be allowed?
Again, it's a, it is a commercial, established, associated, grounds of weight and things preventing planning events. We'll play the one-off party and falls.
Well, I would say more of that. That we, this would be a nice one.
Well, I think the other use, the periscope specific was more, I guess, I guess, I think, we're sitting there, no one traditional.
Did we first see this Friday? Was this, was this proposal set out Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday, and it's Monday? And we refer down to plenty more Friday? And did not we refer it to plenty more? So it goes back like some time? All right. There's no further questions. I'll entertain a motion in some direction. Whether you table it, pass it, or just kill. Who wants to make a motion, one way or the other?
I would ask too, do we have the absolute table? Is there any way to take these concerns, commendations, and send it right back to the planning department? Is that too fast in time or something?
I mean, tableling procedurally is not a, 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 a good place as an item for consideration. That can be a definite if you never break it back to consideration. Procedurally, playing your, it's, it's, look at this and forward your recommendation. So you certainly can act, but the board do have taken, take another look, refer it back to them and further decide. And so this is an option. I would tell you that if you don't adopt this, I think we're back to a look at a nuisance-based police power, which again, you know, we started there, we took a look at that, we're comfortable with, with the way we were feeling or approached that at the time.
This would just shut them down if they were in violation of this?
Well, for starters, I think.
They have to have a permit to do it.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think.
If they're not, if they go follow the rules, then they get.
The uses that you have currently that make this definition are not, haven't, they haven't been acquired to have any type of laws permitting. That will become a requirement. And I think we'll call them a real intermittent type, type use. So you can begin to regulate them sort of more administratively than things get for Frankpot. But it might, it might take some time to take that. You'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis for that particular.
Well, maybe it's a good idea. Just trying to process how it actually would work.
Well, right now.
So in, in, I'm sorry, just finished the, the, if you can handle this tonight, I, I think that I, I at least would interpret that as, as a direction to think about going back to police power, back to enforcement that is more like in the manner of nuisance or, or noise.
I like this a lot better personally.
This, well, and, and what I would propose doing then is come back to you with draft and look for the planning board. And then you could put this side by side with that, the planning board, and lay out the approach, obviously, approaches. Also, you know, I would like to do more in-depth study if we're headed toward noise ordinances. You know, my understanding of notoriously difficult enforcement. I haven't, we haven't been focused on, on that kind of work. So I want to do more study.
So if this is, if I understand this correctly, the planning board that live for it is dead with us, they're good with it. I think they're basically telling the planning board that we're sending it back to you because we're going pretty much override. Well, what are we doing then? Because we're sending them some additional. I have a consideration. I'll make a motion to table it. All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor of table, for each panel? All right, is that one, two, three? Okay. So we'll tell the planning board that we're sending it back. The next item is board action on apartments of the apartment to family dwelling ordinance. Any discussion from the council? Have a motion to adopt?
And is that motion include the consistency sake?
All in favor? I thought it was a second. I'm sorry. Do I have a second? All in favor? All right. We had the presentation of the Town of Franklin Audit for the fiscal year 2016-2014. Martin Starr and his associate Kelly, gentlemen, welcome, gentlemen. Nice to see you again.
It's nice to see you all. Thank you for having me. Um, do you all have your paperwork ready?
Yes, we did have.
So just some audit highlights. Um, we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the clearest opinion that we can issue, which basically means we found no material misstatements that would lead us to believe that the financial statement, Rita, would be misleading. Your report has been submitted and accepted by the LGC about a week ago. And as always, very, very cooperative staff. They've always been very, very accommodating with anything that we ever need. Emily, everybody, just very, very cooperative and thanks our job, I would say. This slide just kind of gives you a three year comparison of your total general fund fund balance for fiscal year 15, 16, and 17. And as you can see, um, total fund balance for general fund actually increased by 120,000, 122,000. Increase was mainly due to sale of capital assets, which was a piece of land and debt proceeds for a fire truck and the town's new account. This slide talks about the fund balance position within general fund. Your total fund balance for general fund was 2.8 million. And you did that stabilization by seek statute, which is tax receivable but are not offset by deferred revenues, to arrive at total available fund balance of 2.4 million. And this slide actually talks about available fund balance from the previous slide as a percentage of expenditures within the general fund. This is a calculation that's used by the LGC to just kind of compare municipalities. Get you guys on the same playing field, state. As you can see from this slide, your available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures actually went down 6%. But the reason for that decrease is because overall general fund expenditures have actually increased, even though your fund balance has increased. And what this calculation actually depicts is LGC says typically 8% represents one month supply of expenditures. As you can see, as of June 30, 2017, your available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was 51%, which equates to roughly 6.5 months supply on hand for expenditure. The next few slides goes over the general fund revenues, specifically the, the top three revenues. Adware tax revenue at 46%. Unrestricted intergovernmental revenue at 31%. And other taxes and licenses at 17%. First off is the adware tax revenue, which actually decreased only about 19, 19,000, which is about less than 1%, which is fairly comparable to last year. Next one is unrestricted intergovernmental revenue, which comprises sales tax revenue, utility tax, ABC profit distribution, and occupancy tax. This line item actually decreased about 26, 26,000 or about 1.9%. This decrease was mostly due to local option sales tax. In 2017, it was about 736,000 and 2016, 752,000. And lastly, for revenues, it's your other taxes and licenses, which is primarily privileged licenses, fire tax, and vehicle and rental tax, or vehicle rental tax. This was an overall increase of about 11,416%, which is also comparable to last year. The next few slides talk about the general fund expenditures, and specifically the top three, which was public safety at 44%, general government at 25%, and transportation at 11%. General government expenditures actually increased from prior year of about 220,000, 222,000 or 22%, which was primarily due to the conversion of the town's common software. Next is public safety expenditures, which actually saw a decrease in 2017 of about 71,000, which was primarily due to larger capital outlay purchases in prior year. And lastly, for transportation expenses, this line item actually saw an increase of about 140,000 or 38.8%, which was primarily due to an overall increase in operating expenditures in capital outlay, specifically the Fox Ridge Circle project and sidewalk for Depot Street within. Lastly, this slide talks about the water and sewer fund, operating revenues of about 3.8 million in 2017, operating income of 943,000. And then lastly, the unrestricted net position, which is basically your working capital or your fund balance of a lot of your fund. Any questions?
Questions for the board, counsel?
We're about six and a half months working, early in the night.
Yes, that's just an estimate that, that we calculate. It's actually in your audit report, we calculate it for everybody. But it's just kind of like a, a way for the LGC to see how you do in comparison to other municipalities.
Rule, don't want to say every.
It just varies. It varies with the, the size of the municipality. And of course, it varies with your operations from year to year. As you can tell, your fund balance went up, but your expenditures overall were more than revenues. So it just depends. And that's really kind of a difficult.
That's a safe zone, right?
Yes, very much so. You guys have a very healthy fund balance.
All right, I guess, we don't have to have a motion to adopt this.
Mr. Mayor and Board, we just have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the.
Acknowledge receipt, okay. We all have a motion. That we've acknowledged the receipt. All right. Thank you so much. Good to see you. All right, the next item is a presentation on equipment on property event venue. Mr. Ledford and Ms. Urch.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, thanks for having us here tonight. Before we get started, we want to extend our sincere condolences to everybody who's been affected by the passing of Councilman Mashburn. Although I didn't know him personally, his passing has affected a lot of people in this community and that in itself says bundles. Thank you also for being here to listen to us tonight with open minds and open ears. That being said, my name is Jimbo Ledford, and I am here tonight representing the property. We are Jimbo's Event Planning Cooperation Association. We are a newly formed organization that is built on experience and knowledge. I said that just to say, I was going to put down there all our credentials, but because we work in cooperation, that list would go on and on and be never ending. I said that to say that this is not any of our first rodeo. We are well experienced in the things that need to be done to make something like this happen. Our mission statement is that we aspire to form and build on existing relationships between town and county governments, their citizens, and special interest groups, or events, festivals, and fundraisers, fundraisers, to boost the local economy and promote growth in tourism within Franklin, North Carolina. The event that we have to present to you tonight is the Day Festival, featuring music, food, beer, arts and crafts, camping, other entertainment such as yoga, disc golf, painting, kids' activities, whatever somebody can imagine, and the local trades and tradesmen. We believe that this will have a, a good economic impact to Franklin and the surrounding areas. Springtopia anticipates selling 3,500 tickets. And research shows that for every $1 spent for a festival, there is three to eight dollars spent elsewhere in the local economy. This is real money that comes to the community through things such as equipment rental and insurance policies, police, jury, staff, cleanup, real money that gets put into our local economy. This will fulfill the TDCs, TDA and TDCs need to beds and beds, which we hope to fill all the campgrounds, hotels, Airbnbs, which also collect the tax. So this will equal money into the TDA and TDC account. Our target audience would be new visitors as we're trying to draw. I believe that Franklin is trying to attract new visitors and old time residents alike. We know that we have a target audience. If we could have in the spring, hikers that come into the IT, that could easily be changed to leaflookers or whatever the, the situation is with Franklin has visitors throughout the year. And if this isn't, doesn't work in the spring, it can work at another time. This event will focus on local residents and, and business involvements as well as bringing in outside vendors. This, what we're saying here is that we will use who we have here that specializes in these tasks and the, the vendors that we don't know. And we will outsource so that we can provide the best quality for the money. I was touching back on the outside, additional outside money that will be spent locally, the 3-day dollars spent in the local economy. Practicality, what we've done so far, we've analyzed the property and developed a site plan, and we've reanalyzed the property and redeveloped site plan and reanalyzed and redeveloped site plan. We've consulted with large scale event coordinators on matters such as budget, the venue, Woodmire property, marketing publicity, talent buying, production, vending, alcohol sales, anything that we would need to research to see whether this was practical, we've done, to the best of our knowledge. We've received guidance and support from the local authorities. We've met with the fire marshal, the police, the mayor. We've even had some certified male correspondence with town attorney, John Hinni. Thank you, John, for that letter. We have a petition of support that Mr. Hattler worked very hard on. We just went to see all the local residents nearby that would be affected by the noise or the traffic. We got a really good result. We only had two people that complained, and the one said that the vending machine at the tubular factory is too loud when they let out a coke. So we contacted the local residents. There we go. We scoped out additional logical parking and camping areas that would be practical for this site. Here is our site plan in front of us. I think you can see it better in front of you. The current idea is to use just the upper portion. It's much more manageable. Most of the facilities we need are already there. Just needs a little landscaping. The biggest mess being right here in the middle where you see the VIP sites. That would be something that we would have to work with the town or local vendors to try to clean up. The action that we're requesting from the board tonight would be to vote to work towards a rental or lease agreement for use of Woodmire property to include the sale and consumption of alcohol according to North Carolina law. And to, to work with us to figure out what has been paid for, what still needs to be done, or how we can clean up the remaining rubble pile in the center section there and make that usable and safe, whether it be done by the town or through us, with cooperation with local vendors, which we've already met with people that are very interested in this project. We could also ask for the town's cooperation and guidance as far as legislation and legality, available government funding, and knowledge of existing partnerships. And it would take a lot of cooperation throughout the whole town and county to make something like this happen. And I think that we could do that. We've scoped out other potential campsites throughout the county in case we need some overflow. Softwood fields, these are just some practical spots to look like they'd work with a shuttle around, that the town or county already owns and that we can probably cooperate with using. Some potential parking, there's a lot of parking along Carolina Mountain Drive, there's some there. We've got some over there by the Macon Bank, Low and Big to Taker Bank, it's pretty practical. They've used it before for the Solar Eclipse event. There we go, there's the Taker Bank, we've got some more parking, on Lake Henry Road, the old Walmart, Lazy Hiker. And then we went throughout the community and we spoke into, these are verbally committed sponsors, obviously, this is just an idea, I didn't pin anybody down to actual numbers, but when everybody called, it seemed to be on board. Here's just a list. We started alphabetically out, Eighteen Electric, Appalachian Waterworks, Airwood Construction, Flush. If you can name a company or a business in town that we've publicly spoken to them and we haven't had any negative response. The only response we've had is some of the vendors on the Highlands Road just want, were concerned parking was not held in front of their floors. Agree with. And the petition, we felt it a noise petition, but it really was to the mayor and town council of Franklin urging them to work with us in any way they could on making this project happen. Really, that's all I've got for the town, unless they have, hopefully you have some questions for us, and we'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, Slimford, have you looked at any other sites that would already have some of these facilities in place, which the equipment on property now has none?
There really are no facilities. Every, all the facilities that need to be put in place are, are brought in on trailer, the stages, the seating, the things that, there are no real permanent facilities or structures that need to be brought in. The only structure that is there is the old building that's already there that we, I think could be repurposed and used for the intent, with very little effort or money.
Who is your newly formed organization that's built on experience and knowledge?
I'm myself and the, the founder of the organization. We are working with Midway Entertainment. We're working with Benny's Creek Event Planning. We're working with, we've worked with Midway Entertainment out of Charlotte. They have a list of vendors that they're working with. We work with Heather Ball, she's helped us coordinate. We have a campground coordinator, station Ben, she's not here tonight, she's on the road.
Are you incorporated?
We have files to pay for, if you can incorporate.
Are you incorporated?
Yes, sir, we are incorporated.
Just filed.
No, sir, I've received confirmation that we are incorporated.
You anticipate selling 3,500 tickets?
We would, that we, that's the low end. Yeah, we live in, and you paid 3,500 tickets.
And you said that you've received guidance and support. And I'm named in there and I have not given any support or negative yet. I am, I am in there, but I have not been, I am not in support. And it is right now, and I'm listening, but I'm in support.
What I meant by supportive was when we contacted you on the telephone, you were supportive and you, and you gave guidance as the mayor of Franklin. So you didn't answer a phone call to. You did answer a phone call, the account that gave to you, and you were supportive in the way you spoke with her as the mayor of Franklin.
To meet with the county authorities that would be involved.
I wasn't trying to insinuate that anybody here has given me their support or any of us their support in this matter, or would.
Have you come up with any kind of estimate of what would cost to the town to do all of what you're requesting as we do on the Whitmire property?
Yeah, we have some, an estimate. It's around, somewhere between twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
What do you think that the town would get, twenty to thirty thousand dollars?
We had put in our, to allow us, if the town doesn't want to take on the responsibility, if the town does not want to take on the responsibility, we would ask that they include that into rental or lease agreement to allow us to take that on ourselves to get that property cleaned up, if I have enough support gathered already to have it done tomorrow.
I have one other question. Have you been to look at anything like the Parkamoose or Brick Park, these things of this nature that could handle that type of crowd?
We have looked at those kind of facilities, and they could handle this kind of crowd. They're not really kind of designed, this is more of an outdoor festival, and our goal for this project was to not only draw business to downtown Franklin, but really was to help try to conserve that piece of property and show that it could be used as a park, and that it could bring revenue to the town as it is, and that we don't need to get rid of it or sell it, and that we could, the town could make some money on it with very little work.
One further question, have you talked to anybody within the county about the possibility of these other sites?
As far as using the other sites, we have not talked with anybody else within the county, we have been contacted by some private persons that have their own land who would like to host this event. Again, our concern is to focus on Whitmire and the town of Franklin.
Do you have a date yet?
We call it Springtopia, this is, these are all working titles, obviously, we can't nail anything down without the town's approval to move forward with the first step of the actual venue. Where have we gone with that?
It just sounds kind of ambitious to be getting all this together in one.
Six months, it's a half a year. We might have to pick a date further down the road, but again, that's another question.
I would be curious to hear, so basically, your idea is to vote on this, Mr. Ledford?
I didn't, I didn't mean to, Mr. Ledford, I, just, I like a party as much as anybody. It sounds great, if you get this off the ground, I'll buy your first ticket, but there's a number of things that you want to do. There is an ordinance in place that says consumption alcohol on that property is still made, or all the years ago, in the process of a, say, you know, rent-lease type of, lease-to-own type of agreement, with lazy hyper made exception for that period. You have to consider some change in that ordinance. I'm more concerned, though, with, you know, if you're gonna, it doesn't need to be a lot of site prep, and I have not assumed this plan, it wouldn't be a lot of site prep when you had a safe place to invite the public, and as the owner of that property, the town was liable for injuries that might happen on it, you'd want to be heavily insured if you got there. And then, I'm, I'm very skeptical of twenty to thirty thousand dollars of work. I mean, it looks, it looks like a lot more than that to me, which, as we've seen it on, you recall the kind of debt, the debt bids and things considering the budget, no budget happens. And to me, I, I, you could put just about any number of this, and I wouldn't be that surprised. So, you know, it was, it's gonna take a public expenditure, we've been bidding, if it's over three hundred thousand dollars, which, I, I'm telling you, if it costs fast, then you're in a formal bidding range, and that takes a lot of time to put together what, what package you put out to bid, to let the bids come in and evaluate them, and, so, you know, it just, it looks like an awful lot more expenditure in the town. I mean, I, and I really, I don't know many way to get to spring of two thousand and eighteen, so, yeah, I mean, I do have a number of concerns trying to make that happen, certainly that. Also, I mean, I think, you know, as long as I have been working with this town, we have had the consideration of what to do with Whitmire property. But having said that, I mean, I, it would be an awful shame at this point to do something that you didn't also know you wanted to carry over, into whatever long-term use of the property is going to be. So, you know, to put any sizable investment unless it's part of a long-range plan, this is, is.
Did you, did you get a bond?
I haven't done anything or have any reason to hailing it, sir. I did talk to an insurance agent about being insured on the property, so we know that's a concern.
And?
It's very feasible, I mean, it happens all the time. It happens since the sixties.
We, we have had a similar request to this, come before the board, they've turned it down. So there is precedent, whichever way we should decide to go on this. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, see if there's anybody that has any further questions that want to talk about this, and your potential campsites, has any of this been set in concrete yet?
No, sir.
Given permission?
No, sir, we wouldn't know stuff about numbers like that.
And what type of legislation and legality do you think that you will be facing that you listed there?
Ornements, such as Mr. Hinni was talking about, that would have to be put into effect to allow drinking on town property, you know, there's laws to write a lease or rental agreement that transfers that property into our possession for that time period, so this, they're not things that are impossible to do.
John, you said, we, we have, we're gonna hear, I guess, in December, of, of this use of Whitmire property. May, it may, it may, in the will of the board, the city is able to, try to do some talk space, if so, something like this is possible to fit, but this is not, it tends to be a one-and-done, it shouldn't be a thing to do, that's, that's what I'm saying, but I would hate to start off with it, with us having, at least a lot of ideas around the board, but the use of them, that would be consistent with the, the aim of it at that location. So I'm not in favor of having it this year or that, or this next year, at the Whitmire property. If nothing else, for that reason, I don't want to bring that off, and, 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 and we hear the bill and the grant, all through that, they need.
I think it's a, I think it's a really big idea. I'd like to have firmer figures for why.
But this, this can have.
No, I understand, I mean, I think you've done a terrific job of getting all this together.
So part of the figures of cleanup, we're, just to say that any, anything that you decide to do with that land is going to involve cleaning up that little piece of property. Any money that you spend on that is not going to go to waste because you can't do anything with the property the way it is with that big pile of rubble in the middle of it and that big hole. So whatever you decide to do with it, that money's not going to go to the hole because it's going to have to be fixed.
Well, it's kind of one of the thoughts that I always have, we've been excited to sell it, what beneficial it has been to clean it up already.
Well, that will be.
I have my concern, too, if they're drawn, but I mean, I was thinking, as far as the process of having it cleaned up, seems like whether we decided to use it, because for yours to sell it, beneficial to have it cleaned up.
Well, I think that's a problem that's, I've come back from the deal. Okay, Mr. Ledford, you need a, I guess, a note to answer tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt, as presented, but this place that has, or I'll entertain a motion, if, are we not? Do I hear a motion?
I would actually like to ask, I know, any potential, so, let's see, there's a little bit of this, across the board, yes?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, I mean, but in regards to those, or in any way, it is better. Continuing, something we can definitely give a look at, what are obstacles to heat down, so that, especially for them, if he has a resource to continue to extension, to continue to work with them.
Certainly, the plan would be considered, whether the district wants, I mean, I would.
Would be, what way to know about that process?
It would be difficult to harness them without some, they're going to want them to pop that direction, what effect they're affecting. It's just whether or not town wants to get involved with this then, to, I mean, I think, you know, this kind of thing, I think it typically takes a, I mean, I'm studying, you say, what does, what does this cost, and what does this, and I hear you're saying about cleaning up this property, but I think maybe we need to look at, bring up what purpose. Certainly, we can talk about it.
And I'll ask you, Mr. Ledford, what you have to, I think, against plausible odds of a potential, he's potentially going to work with town staff based to regulate this way in nineteen.
Sure, yeah, we're obviously.
To get that to help that foundation.
Absolutely, you know, we, our idea is to help Franklin, and we want to continue moving forward with that. That being said, I, you know, we can think about it. No, I understand that, yes, we would be willing to continue to work with, in any way that you would allow us to work, and we understand that you have paid for a land use survey, and that's great, and we also understand that we have paid for that land, and have been able to use it for many years, and wonder if there is any action that is guaranteed to follow this, thirteen thousand dollars that y'all have spent to have this survey once again? I mean, is it, is that what we're doing, is just, is this pre-taction, pretend action, or is there really some follow-through that you can guarantee as taxpayers that we're going to see from this thirteen thousand dollars we put into this vault in land use? I mean, how many times have we done this as a council?
We have had things like this come up, a huge boat's on, they did not, and I'm going to use your very force, Mike, how well do you think this fits into what the plan is?
I, now that there's.
Do you want the Lord's shot t-shirt?
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, sir, I know. Were you there?
Lord, no.
No.
I was old enough to be there.
Why weren't you?
Well, I just did, but I know twenty thousand other people did.
They sure did, they sure did, twenty thousand people came to that town.
And they're still trying to clean it up.
I understand, but what I'm talking about, what I, I know the concern is the alcohol, and I get that, and that's a real concern, I'm not trying to say that's not a concern, we all understand that. We're not asking Bus Light to come, and we're probably not going to, but Bud Light, we are talking about craft beer aficionados. We're talking about a different kind of people that has disposable income, that are looking for cool, good places to move, that hold festivals and things of this nature. We study Facebook, and people that talk about moving here talked about the festival. They talked about that. We're not talking about revving motorcycles up and down the road, and shooting pistols into the air, and drinking as much beer as we possibly can. People don't pay eight dollars a beer to drink twenty of them. Who can afford that? I mean, we're, we're trying to attract professional people. I understand where this beer-drinking mentality comes in, but that's not where we've evolved to.
I don't see that as the only concern.
Okay, I understand that, I understand that.
I mean, I, because I, I like the idea of bringing commerce in, I love the idea of Whitmire property being used, but I also can see all the other concerns, the liability concern, the town's cost on it, especially, and, yeah, thirteen thousand, we've already put that out there, so we would be at least seeing that study before anything's done. And then, my other concern in two thousand and eighteen is, we have a bridge that's made in progress, and I doubt it would finish for spring two thousand and eighteen, so I'm concerned with traffic congestion in that area at that point, so, I mean, I think it's a lot of concerns, and I don't think it comes down to just beer.
Right, I understand. We considered the bridge, that was one of the things, and we just felt that's the way that everything flowed, it seemed like with the eclipse, that everything flowed really well. I was concerned about the bridge at that point, but I drove, we drove through town several times, and it really didn't seem to be that big of a problem, I think, if, if, and I'm not trying to push that date, I'm just, you know, talking to me, and I'm talking back to you, appreciate you doing that. We studied that, and we just, there was a real-life study, we saw the way that things worked during the eclipse, and they seemed to flow pretty smoothly, so I do, we do understand that concern. We don't, this, the people we work with in Midwood, they've done this many times, this is not the first one, it's a practical thing that brings revenue, it really brings money to the community. And I understand there are a lot of concerns, but we haven't asked the town for anything, we have offered to pay the town to rent us the venue. At this point, we probably will seek some money from the infrastructure budget possibly to help clean up that, since, in my opinion, that is infrastructure. We will ask for money from the TDA and TDC, but we're not asking the town to do anything except for allow us to see if it's feasible. Let us see if we can form a bond of cooperation with the county, and they'll let us haul that rubble off and dispose of it at a reduced cost, or for free. Let us see if we can talk to our friends in the construction industry, and if they'll come out and volunteer to haul that stuff, or free, or for fuel to that facility. I mean, we just want to see if it's, is it practical? Nobody's going to help us if they say we don't have the, or we don't have the town's permission. And that's just where we're coming from.
It's our job to take care of our own property, you're understanding to go in there. Jimbo, it hurts me, but I don't see it. It hurts me because I love the, the energy, I love the planning. Damn, I was young, but it hurts me. But I, I don't think it's in the cards, unless I'm mistaken around you, I don't think it's in the cards for us to clear the decks for this coming spring. I think we've asked a lot of questions, and I think it's time to call some up or down folks. It's not like Mr. Ledford doesn't have other potential locations out in the county of private property. So I'll entertain a motion, whether to vote it up or vote it down. Do I hear a motion?
Could we put off the decision until, I don't think that's that important?
No, ma'am, I don't think so, because he needs to have the answer, he's got a lot of work to do to get this thing underway, and I think that we need to vote it up or down tonight. Do I make that motion?
I'd say, either one of them, I have to say.
Vote it down tonight, do I hear a second? Second, all in favor, vote it down. One, two, three. All against. So passes are three to one, and you abstain?
Well, I was just abstaining.
Okay, so three and two.
You can't abstain, but you'll say, I said so.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, Mr. Ledford, thank you, sir, appreciate your time, sir. Okay, the next item is, let's take about five minutes for a quick one. How much more time?
I ask the council, so.
You know that you're tardy, and I'm going to be making a note of that, teacher.
You stand for detention.
And you, I'm going to send you down to the principal's office. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move an item up, if there's no objection to the board, it'll still be on the agenda, but we're going to move it up and take care of it right now. And, did Linda Harbuck come? Oh, you're representing Linda, okay.
I'm a sacrificial lamb.
If, if, okay, all right, which number is this we need to bring up on?
Nine B, Mr. Mayor.
Nine B, okay.
That is the one you added. Hillcrest.
I'm trying to find it on my sheet here.
It was added, I just wrote it down, that's a quick one.
Oh, okay, Hillcrest, Madam Manager, you wanted to start it with, what, showing what the conditions are there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, what's out before you tonight is some photos that we're taking one day last week, and then our town planner, Mr. Justin Setzer, can speak to that, and I think our town attorney's going to give an update as well. So if you kind of want to go through the slides, and kind of, because I know you've been out there as well.
Can everybody see it all right?
See them there. So, yeah, this is the, this is the house on, at seventy-six Hillcrest Avenue, that some of our ladies from that area are here tonight to speak on. You can see where the gate has fell down here in the front, which is, it's. You can see where the gate has fell down here in the front, which is, it's exposed to the front of the house. This house, we've had an open minimum housing on, on this, and it's been opened, it started back in the fall of fifteen, two thousand and fifteen, so we're just a little, two years into it. And it's has, this property has had, been definitely a struggle, especially with the way it's deeded, and just everything that goes with it. But I've got, these are pictures of the property behind the gate. And I've presented this a couple of times to the board, but this is the most recent conditions. You can also see there's bags of trash, open barrels, I'm sure standing water, which is going to have mosquitoes and so on in it. Look, we're getting into the cold part of the year, so mosquitoes shouldn't be that much of an issue, but in the summer, it's a major issue. Back, I can't remember the exact year, probably around two thousand and seven, but there was a fire at the structure, and you can see, in this picture, you can see where the, where the fire, at one of the entry doors there. The owner had put siding over, trying to hide the conditions of the house, of where the fire was, but then after, and since the house was condemned, she took all this wood siding off, and now it's exposed, the conditions that I've been talking about, where the roof has been burnt, there's charring throughout the house, and which, it was never livable even after the fire. Just more pictures of it in the roof. You actually start seeing where the roof is starting to blow in some places here. Another picture of the side where it's been burnt. This is looking, just there on the porch, where there's just lots more debris. The house has numerous holes throughout the house, there's holes in the floor, and of course, also from the fire, and from where the fire department's been. Bags of trash. They've tried to do some additions, tried to do some, like lean-to additions, which is here, and it's, since it started leaking, and the floor's rotten, and that addition's only been there probably a year at the most, which was pulled without permits, no permits were pulled from the county. And then here's another view, just more of the conditions inside the property. On the side, just more, this is actually from a couple of months back. You can see just fire, or firewood, and some car, car parts, and carpet, and tarps, and another one. There's actually, I don't know if you may see my mouse here, this is the one that was the most startling to me. This area right here, this square area, I actually stumbled across this when I went to the property after serving a warrant to go there to inspect the property. That's the area where there's a septic tank, with no lid and just plywood over top of it, and I stumbled, I actually stepped on it when I felt it give a little bit. So I'm glad I didn't, it was strong enough to hold me up at the time. So, I mean, there's lots of that.
When you started losing weight.
Yeah, that was, yeah, right after that. And you can't see it all in the picture, but on around, there's the chimneys actually fell off the house. And then the other side of this fence, there's more, all the siding that the owner took off the property is just stacked up on the other side, but there's more cars and more trash. There's actually another motorhome back there that you can't see from the road. So it's, and of course, here's the placard I made whenever we, since condemned the house. So it's, it's been ongoing. I told Sissy this morning, when I was talking to her, that it's been a long process, it's took longer than I like and anybody else's likes, but we're rounding third, and we're on our way to home, and hopefully we're on the final stretch. John's, has done, it's, John could talk more on his, where it's at now in the court system, which is, we're at the mercy of them.
So we have three enforcement actions that are similar to this one underway. This one and two others are for complete removal of the structure, because it is condemned and not, it's dilapidated, and it cannot be repaired for less than half of its value. The other two were easier to get service on the owners, because like as Justin said, that there's, there was the way the property was titled, for the other two was much simpler, we got service on them. So if you serve a lawsuit, you've got to show that you got, you've got this into the hands of the people that you're, you're moving against, that you're acting against. They get a certain amount of time, they get thirty days generally to respond to it, which in those other two instances, we pass that mark, you know, on a gallop. And we have, now with both of those have been, we have, the next step is go to the clerk of court and get an entry of default, which says, these people haven't responded. Once you have that, you can petition the superior court to give you an order that, it's a default judgment that says, okay, you're entitled to whatever you ask for. And in all three cases, what we've asked for is that, an order that allows the town to enter the property, remove the structure, and have a lien against it in the amount of the costs. I would ask everybody to bear in mind, and I've mentioned this before, that, you know, if you're, if you're the judge sitting on the other end of this, you've got to really make sure that it all makes sense to you, because you've got a party coming and asking to take some property from some people. So we're talking about people's property rights, and, you know, that's a large part of the way we try to enforce this generally, is to try to get voluntary compliance, because it's a much better outcome for everybody than we come in and bully people out of their property and take it away from them. Cases like this one, clearly that is never going to happen, and we realize that. So we're moving forward with an application at this point. We finally got service on this defendant and the seventeen other owners in interest, because she had deeded in all kinds of crazy ways to lots of different people, and it was difficult to try to get, you know, service by mail became impossible, we did service by publication, we're good to go, we have now entered them in default, and we have sent it today to the attention of the superior court to look at whether or not we have to have a hearing, which I'm hoping we won't have to, but a superior court judge can decide we don't need a hearing if the service sort of requirements are satisfied. I will tell you, the update on, on this particular service is that of those seventeen people, the sheriff's office wasn't able to find any of them within this area by any reasonable means, and the owner, the primary owner and occupant, one-time occupant, was said by somebody in the area to have moved to Georgia, and I haven't heard anything from them. So they really are in default, really haven't meaningfully tried to respond to our lawsuit. And I think we do deserve to have a default judgment at this point. From there, what we would look at is, we probably try to combine a bid, we may see if we get separate bids, for a company that has the kind of equipment you need to come in and remove these things and grade the property, remove the structures and grade them. That's going to take some time, but hopefully not a lot. I don't think it's in nearly an amount that would require, you know, any formal bids, it could be pretty fast. So that's where it stands, where I'm hopeful any day now to have default judgments on all three of those, this one included.
Mr. Mayor, how long does it take to get bids?
Well, if they're informal, you don't have to advertise and have a set bid opening and have a, you know, certain amount of time. It's basically, you make some phone calls. And, and I, you know, it'd be, I don't know if we've talked about it, but it's, and I think we did look at this in the past, where we have, we've got some ideas about who would be willing to do the work and for roughly how much. We just have to re-dot our i's and re-cross our t's about that.
Who ends up owning the, the property after all this is finished?
Well, so it's a, as I said, it's a lien against the property, it's a pretty good lien, it's collectible in the nature of a, an assessment which gives us priority to foreclose that's better than anything other than a pre-existing lien, of which in all three of these, there's no bank loan, there's no, there's nothing in the way of, of that, or, you know, federal or state tax liens, and I don't believe there are any of those against these properties either, last I checked. So that's how you can recover your, your funds, to go and foreclose that lien. And that also, that's going to be a lengthy process, but at that point, the structure's gone.
I have a question too, please. I had asked, I guess I, I've spoken to Justin, I think most recently about it, why can you not at least reinstall that gate, so that that, that, there's not a huge gaping hole when you look into that property? It wasn't a huge issue until the gate was gone, because all you could see was the dilapidated fence, and now you see the entire property. Why can't that be corrected at least? That would be minimally expensive.
Well, so, first off, generally, not speaking about that property in particular, but anybody's private property is private. And if we, you know, heard Justin mention that he had to execute a, an administrative warrant to go on the property. I mean, you know, none of us would be too happy about somebody who just went on their property with no permission and no, you know, no authority to do it, so we have to.
But you've also just said that none of the owners, none of the, none of the seventeen can be located. I mean, who's going to complain that you put the fence, that you put the gate back up?
I feel like if the gate's down, at least it'll get done quicker.
And it's safer. I don't, and, and I'm being affected very negatively about it, and I, I don't, I don't feel that way. I, I believe that you need to look first to protect your residents.
I'd be happy to look at whether we can do that safely and legally.
Mr. Crowe?
There's thirty-day appeal even from a default judgment. So you couldn't go and do anything until the time to appeal that. During the thirty days, you can get the bids. So there is, even with, even with a default judgment, there's a thirty-day appeal period that anybody who's negatively affected has a right to appeal, so there'd be no action be able to take during that period, but that would be the time to line up the dozer.
Yes. But if you can have everything lined up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying there.
Yeah. We're sort of, our patience is running out.
And we can line those, that up, okay. But there's no way that really we can put the, how did the gate get down?
Certainly, I don't, I don't know.
We didn't, we didn't.
No.
Nicolaic, probably. Same as everything else.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else on, on that tonight?
The beds.
Pardon?
The beds.
Oh, yeah. I was more afraid about getting snake bit, but anyhow, okay. All right, let's move on to the, Rick, I'm sorry we've kept you up, sir, about the request for the street closing to the Christmas parade.
Some of us just need to say no when they ask us to be on the chamber again. I'm here, Linda is on vacation, so I'm here representing the Franklin Chamber Commerce, asking for certain street closures for the Christmas parade, the Sunday after Thanksgiving.
There's nothing new about what you're doing.
The only difference in the route is it would stop at Depot Street, go down Depot Street and break up down there just past Franklin Sheet Metal, instead of going across the bridge, because there's nowhere to go, they would just go to the river.
Does anybody have a problem with the request? If not, I'll entertain a motion to allow the street closing, who says requested? Is that okay with you? You okay? Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor. Ladies, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, that's passed unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy.
Appreciate it.
Sorry we kept you waiting.
Oh, it's not a problem.
All right, Mr. Oster, you're up with a budget amendment.
First one is to amend the budget of the water treatment plant retention project to the amount that we were awarded by the authority to award from the Department Division of Water Infrastructure. And this amendment will decrease that budget to that amount in the amount of sixteen thousand six, six hundred and fifty-two dollars, and that will bring that to the amount that we were awarded. The second one is actually to appropriate interest settlements plans for this apartment for a two thousand one increase in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and thirty-two And then the third one is actually to appropriate additional revenues from the pumping base events in the amount of five thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars.
Okay, can we vote on those all in once, or do we need separate? Okay. Any discussion from the board? There fears to be none, so I'll call for a motion to adopt, as presented.
Second.
Second?
Okay.
Oh, you said, okay. Thank you, all in favor. Okay. All right, Madam Manager, you going to talk to us about a sidewalk project for US two, twenty-three, four forty-one South?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board. What you have before you tonight is a request from NCVOT. As we know, in the upcoming years, they'll be replacing a median down four forty-one South, probably starting merit around where Zach's visas and Wide Horizon going up past the McDonald's in town. And what they're requesting, I know that the town, we've been in conversations with NCVOT for a couple of years now about pedestrian safety, and, you know, that road is heavily utilized by vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So DOT is willing to put sidewalks in, the towns match for that would be forty-two thousand forty dollars, and we could take that from Pell Bill funds.
Okay. All right, I'll, any, any discussion, any questions from the board on, on that?
What, what budget cycle we talking about?
Now, they're requesting it would be this budget cycle, even though it's about a two-year project.
When are they going, think they're going, you believe in two years' time, they're supposed to have this project?
They're supposed to start.
It's pretty high up on the RPO, I don't.
The forty-seven thousand from Pell Bill, what percentage is of that, is that probably for the overall cost of this sidewalk?
It's twenty percent match on our end, they, they carry that.
Eighty percent free?
Yeah, I think that's a good deal, and it's very, very, very needed, very much needed.
You want to make a motion?
Scary, yes, I make the motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second to approve. All in favor. Discussion on stop sign, we need a discussion on that stop sign.
Just real quickly, this is just something in your ordinance book, anytime there's a new stop sign that needs to be put in place, the town council has to approve that. I went and we made some photos on Curtis Street, to my knowledge, and after speaking with town staff, there has never been a stop sign on Curtis Street. You can see from the photos, the intersection there between Curtis and Sunset and Lyle, it's, can get pretty chaotic. There's been some concerns from neighbors, and then also our police department's done some patrolling on Curtis Street, and it seems to be a necessity if we could put up a stop sign there.
Okay, any in-depth discussion on the stop sign? Would you like to make the motions to approve the stop signs? Okay, second?
I'll second.
All in favor. That's something we might look at, the ordinance review committee. All right, update. All right, approval of maturity schedule and promissory note for water treatment plant. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board, what you have in your agenda packet is an official letter from the state, that's a schedule for your upcoming water treatment plant debt. The first thing is just the schedule of when the debt would be due. The first payment is due not earlier than six months, nor later than twelve months after the estimated date of completion of the project, and at this time, the estimated completion of the project is October the fifth of two thousand and eighteen. The second part of this is just, of course, that's your maturity schedule and then your promissory note. All we're looking for tonight is just approval from the board to adopt the schedule as presented, and of course, permission to sign the promissory note.
Okay, any discretion from the board? I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
Second. All in favor. Okay, Madam Manager? All right, update on Town of Franklin online utility payment and credit card payment. Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Board, and I may let our finance officer, Ms. Oster, speak to this as well. This has been our first month, we finally made it to where you can, we accept, the Town of Franklin accepts credit card and debit card payments, along with online payments. And I believe Ms. Oster has some information about kind of the fees, and also how many residents we currently have signed up to utilize this service.
Currently, for this past month, we have a point-of-sale machine, which is up at the customer service desk, that they give them their student card there. So far, in the month of October, we've collected nineteen hundred and thirty-one dollars through that machine, so probably about twenty-five clients have used their card as part. Then our online, our e-com, which is online, we have taken in seven hundred and two hundred dollars online for the month, for our first month, which is pretty good. Eighty-eight, eighty-eight transactions, eighty-eight different accounts. So that is out there, people are using it. I think that will definitely increase, because it does take some. I think that will definitely increase because it does take some effort on the customers' part to get in there, sign up, and actually set up their new account and everything. So as more people become aware of it, they'll really utilize it more. So that's eighty-eight people that have to come through the front door and actually use that, so.
Okay, any comments from the board? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Doster. Tax release, Madam Manager?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor and Board. What you have before you tonight, we've passed out, is a tax release. It's for account number two-one-oh-two-nine, and the release bill amount would be for one hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents. The reason that's being requested to be released is that property is now occupied by NC DOT. It's the former Con building, which is no more. So therefore, they're asking for a tax release in that amount.
Okay, any discretion from the board? All right, I'll entertain a motion to give this approval to the tax release.
I move we approve this tax release.
Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Okay.
I'm excited.
Discussion on Main Street parking. Mr. Moore, our town engineer, you're up, sir, and Mr. Sutser.
Good evening, Council. Yeah, I guess, I don't know if it was September meeting, I think it was October, September, Mr. Collins wanted to know, give us where we're going with Main Street, that we weren't happy with the situation of parking on Main Street, and, you know, we've had studies and wanted to see some action, so tasked myself and our engineer Nathaniel Moore to get the ball rolling, in a sense, and get, see some action. So now, in my absence last week, got to put all this to Nathaniel. Nathaniel put this together this pack this week. He, we were supposed to work on it a little bit more together, but I was unable to, so I got to give Nathaniel props for our PowerPoint before we start. So what we've looked into, we've looked at some of our studies we've done in the past, and our parking studies and other downtown studies, and trying to give, come up with a best way to tackle this that is, give everybody a good feel of how, what we think's best and where to go. So we've kind of broken up what we want, how we want to tackle this, it's in two phases. And first, to start right here at Patton Avenue, which is right here at Town Hall, and go down to the square and do, and implement some temporary parking pattern. And which, from when we would input that, we would get some input and some public input from the town, and, you know, see how people feel, and, you know, use it for a timeframe, two weeks, a month, whatever the board would like to see. And then after that timeframe, then we would come back and see how we feel about it, and then if it's something we want to go stay with, we want it to go permanent, we want to go back, you know, decide from there in our phase two. And at that point, we can, DOT is looking at paving Main Street in about five years, so then we can start really planning to have a rock, a plan of what we want to do whenever they come through, where we want to put bulbouts, how you want to do crosswalks, how to park and everything. But then we can implement, be implementing this in a temporary semi-permanent aspect in, in the meantime. So what we're proposing is, so we seeing something a little different, and I'm sure some people are going to hate it, some are going to love it, but starting at Patton Avenue down to Felix Street in Aula, and on the, on the right side of the road, going to parallel parking on the right side, and leaving the thirty-degree angle on the left side, which would be the side of Books Unlimited and the Scottish Tarp. Leaving with the thirty. Now, we've been some discussion on the forty-five, we've been, there was lots of discussion of forty-five degree angle spots for years, and thought that's the best way to go. Well, after Nathaniel, we started getting out there and started measuring, actually putting some measurements on the ground and getting some hard figures, the forty-five just won't work. The only way it would even work is even if we went down to a single lane, because it's just the, even with the parallel in the angles of the cars that would be sticking out, it would just make the lanes too narrow. So, and this is implement still the same design of two lanes through town. So here you can see the current layout of the parking. I'll let Nathaniel talk a bit more about the curb lengths and the angles, if you want.
Yeah, let me jump in. The way our current parking is right now, and until we actually went out there and measured and looked, it was, we never knew. We looked at curb length from that is line to line, basically, of how much real estate that single parking space takes up. And currently, what we have is a twenty-two foot spot that each space takes up. Well, we got looking, and the twenty-two foot space is the same as you would have a parallel spot. That's an extremely wide, and that gives an eleven-foot stall width, that we can narrow that down and use better use of the real estate that we have out there to increase some parking and allow, still with the thirty-degree parking angle, and allow a little longer vehicle. Because currently, right now, the way it's, way it's marked is eleven, eleven feet sticking into the road, the stall depth. A little bit of measuring and looking at vehicles parked in town, you want to look at a, a small four-door car, usually takes up about that eleven-foot stall depth, you go to SUV, you're somewhere in the fifteen-foot stall depth, and you go to a larger crew cab truck, you're up almost in that twenty-foot space. And I think that's a problem we've all ran into, is coming uptown hill, two vehicles parked, angle parked, and you can't get around them. And if you look at the figure on the right, it kind of gives you an idea. If we, you had two, say SUVs parked here with a fifteen-foot stall depth on, you have an eight-foot driving lane, and that's best case. If you've got a truck, you might have a six-foot driving lane you're trying to pass through. One of the problems with all the studies we found that we have is, most of the studies are based Main Street on a set width. Once we got out there and measured, it's not a set width. It, it starts as a smaller V, we're around forty-five and a half feet curve to curve on this end, and once we get farther down towards the square, which as you drive, it's not as bad down there, you widen out to forty-eight, forty-nine feet on down. So what we wanted to address was this issue up here, trying to get through, and to add some mobility to get through this corridor of road up here. So what, what we want to implement is the parallel parking on this side of the road. We feel the best cost savings is to do the section from Patton Avenue to the square. We'll try that, and if everyone's agreeable, we like it, we get input from the town, the board members, we don't need to implement the whole thing right now for cost savings measures, because we would like to continue that down all the way down towards Lazy Hiker, basically, and the whole corridor in phase two. The, the slide on the right is just some options of how we can do the parallel. Here's a, this is, comes from the MUTCD, Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and these are all approved through NC DOT for on-street parking. So that'd be something we can see what we like, what's the, what's the best use of the money that we're going to spend to do this temporary measure up here. And here's, here's the cross-section for once we can implement the parallel on one side. We will still have a thirty-degree, fifteen-foot into the travel lane, angle parking, and with an eight-foot by twenty-two-foot parking spot, we gain, on the small end, we get eleven and a half feet driving lanes. And that is, that's worst-case scenario right here with the rugs and eras. As you continue on downtown, uptown hill, the road actually gets wide, and it will be easier to drive through. One other thing that I know has been mentioned quite a bit is loading zones. I've seen it, the little bit of time I've been here, several times. You've got UPS trucks, you've got FedEx trucks. A lot of businesses have someone stopped in the middle of the road, and another truck's trying to pass, and you have complete gridlock out there. So we would like, at the end by the square, to install a loading zone and have this for all, for Macon County Transit, for UPS, for FedEx, for all the businesses to use, and we need to enforce this in the eyes to be used.
Yeah, because we, in the sense, people see it where they'll even park in the crosswalks and block a crosswalk, and that's a safety concern as well, because I'm sure people that run around town, crosswalks, everybody knows you come up the Main Street, you'll, sometimes you get to a crosswalk and the cars are so close, you're, somebody's in it, and you don't see them until you're on the crosswalk. And so that's also an issue with these trucks, when they park in there, so they block, and people having to walk around them. So we've got, I think it's even on our next, here in a second, we're going to talk about how we're going to tackle that as well.
What we can use, this is NC DOT approved product as well, is some temporary pavement marking tape. And this is, there's a couple great things about this. We can install it ourselves, we don't have, we can get our public works department to do it. It's a temporary installation, and one of the comments I'd like from the board is to kind of fill out how long you would like to leave this in place. I think at a minimum, we need to go two weeks, and I would leave it up to the board to kind of get an idea of how long we'd like to keep it in. The tape should last several months in place, especially low-volume roads as us. It's easily modified. If we don't like something, we want to change something, we get some input, we can modify it easily and change the parking situation around. And I have included engineer's estimate in that for the cost of that tape. The other, the other phase of this would be, while you're at the crosswalk right now, you are sitting, or you're standing in between cars. So we would like to add some temporary curb extensions for the crosswalk, so you can get into traffic, or you're not in traffic, to try and cross the road. And at some point, that would be, we would use our bulbouts, curb extensions, in a more permanent sense, but this is just a temporary sense to get everyone used to, see how we like it, see where exactly we want the crosswalks, because there's a little bit of leeway and some things we'd like to change on that later on as well. So same thing, it's, they're temporary, they're easily installed, we can install them ourselves, and I've included some prices for those as well, for our crosswalks we currently have. This is just a good slide to give an idea where we want to go at. These are, this is a mid-block, bulbout curb extension. This is, in the end, what we want to eventually have, how we want things to look. And we've also looked into some decorative crosswalks, which I would really like, I think they look good. That's something in the final phases that we would like to get to, once we have a permanent project, everyone's happy with the parking, and we're all agreeable upon what we want to do. Just to kind of give a brief idea, we have looked into several funding sources for this. One of these is NC DOT Traffic Engineering Branch, some safety funding, and it's called a vulnerable user. That's for head crossings, because we've had quite, we did a crash study and had quite a few, quite a few accidents in this section of roadway up here. Another one is from our district office, and we have representative from NC DOT here as well for some TAP funding, and that helps, that's the crosswalks and bulbouts, and I'm sure he can explain a little more than that, kind of where the process is on that. And I know Mr. Sutser has put in for some funding as well, you might want to talk about?
Yeah, just so I'm covering our whole, every base, right now, we're going through the prioritization, the STIP program for the state, where we do our big projects that we want for the next ten years. And in that process, I've submitted Main Street, the same, the whole section of Main Street from Harrison Avenue back to the foot of Town Hill, to, for, to have this done if spot funding, or if it comes in, all this is, you know, too much for the town to take on, or seeing these other fundings fall through, that we've still got another option and see how that scores and ranks coming down the road. And that doesn't mean it's something that's going to be built in ten years, something can be deliverable in five, six years, which might line up good with when Main Street being repaid. The George Road project that Ms. Town Manager, Summer, Woodard were just talking about, went through the same process and was ranked really high, and that's how we got, it was funded. So I'm just trying to cover all every, having, having all our options and not closing any
This is phase two, and this is one of the things that the TAP funding is used for, is making everything up to ADA standards for ramp, crosswalks. I'm going to call our engineer from NC DOT to do a little more, he, he's more of a funding man, and he can probably explain a little better than I can.
Pretty much, Nathaniel, that covered everything. We've got a source of funding that is available currently, they call it TAP. Just to bring up crosswalks, pedestrian facilities, pretty much up to ADA compliance, these are pretty much the examples here. Probably saw some examples, we had did one round of this already here in the town. I know down here at the lower end of town, it's-
Hot water area.
Yeah, yeah.
Here in Aula.
Did several, so we actually got one more that's actually fixing the let here pretty quick. But that funding is, is available. I had some discussions today, so if we decide, well, I've got some coordination to do between, between the town, Nathaniel and Justin, Summer and myself, we've been working on that, trying to get, figure out some preliminary engineering and the funding for a lot of the project. From a DOT standpoint, the TAP funding for to improve the crosswalks, it's available, so we can move pretty quick on getting those updated. Probably put a project together through the winter, ready for spring or summer, to be, to be let for, did, construction.
So you want to have any questions, comments, concerns?
I'm willing myself to go along with a limited time period with the temporary strapping. I think it needs to be sixty, ninety days, there'll be a, you got to get over the initial rush.
People aren't going to like it.
And I really think we should consider on that, on the left side, the south side, in front of the old post office, old building, not up, up close to the Janus and Jewelers, have two or three spots parallel on both sides. There's two reasons. One is, that's where it pinches in. You've said that, it's tighter there.
It is.
And so it will alleviate that issue, and it will, it will also give the effect of, if it later, it was parallel on both sides, you would, you know, you know the distances. It would, it would give you a double, I'm talking about three spots possibly, and then the rest of the thirty-degree on the south side, and then the parallel on the right. But I think that would be a, I think it'd be a good start.
Yeah, and I think the temporary markings that we're going to use are great for ideas like that, because we can easily change and modify. If we don't like it, we can pull it out and change, try something else. So that's a possibility that we can definitely try.
And if I may interject real quick, Mr. Mayor and Council, one thing we also talked about is, and one the council would like us to continue with this, I believe DOT's offered some message boards to where we could put some message boards out, just kind of announcing that there's a new traffic pattern ahead.
One thing on, in from the old post office building, one thing that we've wrestled with over there, and I can understand it- over there, and I can understand it, the Veterans Affairs Office is there, there are an awful lot of handicapped people that come in and out of there all day long, and I think that was one reason that we, we've had a couple of handicapped diagonal, yeah, diagonal parking spaces there. And in front of the Town Hall, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Collins, do you see any problem with parallel in front of Town Hall?
Well, if it's going to be on a temporary basis, if we've got engineers out there, I don't think it's a matter of, I mean, I can't speak to it as a safety issue, I'm just willing to, to try some different configurations to get rid of the bottleneck.
One of the things I have noticed there in front of the old post office is the vans that pull up, that have to open the door out, and I don't know how well that works on parallel.
We are keeping the handicap spots still available and up to ADA standards, even in the parallel spot that we will change. So we're keeping that to standard.
I just wanted to mention, there is an awful lot of handicapped people going in, those old veterans are getting older.
And we've had that discussion, that's, in one of the other previous plans, it had moving the handicap spot to the Town Hall side, from the other side, I don't have anyone in front of the veterans. I mean, Nathaniel said, we really need to keep it on that side for the veterans, for convenience of going in and out of that building.
What about down in front of like Outdoor 76, in that area where you have to step up, how are you going to deal with that, so parallel parking?
We're, we're going to do parallel down there, and we can actually, because the road is actually quite a bit wider, we're going to move that spot over wider than what our eight-foot is right here. And we'll, we'll see how it is first, we might have to add a little delineation in there so people don't pull all the way to the curb, but that's one of the things that we want to, we want to see how it works first, before we get too involved in it. And later down the road, I would like to see that changed to a little different layout, but that's later on down the road in a full project development, so.
Okay, so did we, I'm sorry, go ahead. So, do we want to put a town limit, or do we just want us to kind of keep it open, Mr. Collins, till we see how it's working so we can play with it?
I, you know, at some point in time, we're going to know. And we'll know when we're there. I just don't want to put it artificially short time and cause it a problem.
The reason I was asking that, do we really need to take a vote on this, or can we just sort of give them their marching orders to?
Mr. Mayor, Board, if I may, one thing we would, if we could get a vote, because we would maybe like to take funding for this.
Oh, okay.
Out of our streets budget, you have a capital improvements line item, I believe you've got fifty thousand in there. This would certainly warrant a street improvement where we could take, I would actually round up and just say maybe four thousand, just to be safe, to take it from that specific line item. And then if the board would like to direct staff of the time when you would like to see us enact this project, we would be grateful.
Mr. Collins, this is been your baby.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that we implement on a test basis, the project basically as presented tonight, knowing that we can make adjustments on the fly with the, and that it get done as soon as possible with the scheduling with the folks at the Public Works, and that we have up to five thousand dollars available through the funding process, and it'd be a minimum of ninety days before we would pull the plug on it. That's my motion.
But within that ninety days, you would be okay with playing?
Adjusting, adjustments during the, yes, I think so.
I hate to ask when you made such a detailed motion, but at the end of the ninety days, can we say, instead of it's done and we pull it up, that that's just at the end of the ninety days that we reevaluate and decide then if we want to pull it?
We just can't pull the plug before ninety days.
Okay, but at the end of ninety days, we're, it's just going to be brought back up for discussion on what?
It would be brought back up if, if we thought we were ready to do something, either pro or con on a more public basis, you know, we could allow it to stay in the other ninety days if the tapes not, you know what I mean?
Perfect.
And some of that might depend on if we get snow, and if the snow plows do hit that, so that's just one track. Keep in mind.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor, do I have?
There's that person.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Matt, as to what was the statement from the streets? This is starting our busiest time of the year, November and December, and the frustration of people not understanding yet how this is going to work. I hear you, you know, and great presentation, but, and I know you want to start immediately, but I think it's going to affect people coming downtown because they don't understand it and they get frustrated, and then they just don't go, well, I'm not going, I'm not going to stop downtown.
Is that what y'all think?
Yes.
Let's go, just as soon after January one, we can do it. We've waited this damn many years, I bet.
You don't want to be in a rush.
Yeah.
You want to modify it? Okay.
I'll second that.
So is everybody up on what the motion is?
I believe so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may interject real quick, I believe our engineer, there are some concerns because this project in which we're pursuing is kind of time-sensitive as far as the material that would be used, it's sensitive to weather.
We are weather-dependent when we can put it down. Now, January, we might have warm days and we might not.
It takes, you know, we, we have no reason to rush as long as we've got something on the book.
Yeah. And we can make an announcement, you know, a week or two, or, you know, before we're going, what we're going to shoot for, you know, we're going to shoot for, you know, January the tenth or something, or whatever day, and if that day didn't work out, then it just don't work, if it's twenty-five degrees, it don't work out.
I think a lot of that will be putting forth some of this to the media and everybody in town to, and some messaging boards out there that, two weeks out, we can have them sitting out there, that's not an issue, so.
I've got one, one comment, too. I see a lot of big trucks coming through there and a lot of, I know it's a public road and all that, but this parallel parking, what I'm afraid of is when you cap that hill, how fast them trucks are going, and somebody's parallel parking, there's going to be somebody hit, and I think there's going to be a lot more wrecks, to be honest with you, because once you, I mean, these people fly, and I really think we need to go down to a single lane where it's slow, makes them slow down. And you can do the forty-five degree angles and get more cars in there, but parallel parking, some of them trucks, I mean semi-trucks, are going through there at forty-five, fifty miles an hour.
Now, we did.
And I'm, that's the issue I see, people fly on Main Street.
We have done some traffic studies out there, when I was formerly, this you do, too, we looked at quite a bit of that. And one lane, we would be back to the situation at the bridge, in the mornings and afternoons, there would be a traffic nightmare. There's just too many vehicles using that section of roadway.
It may hinder some of the big trucks coming through town, though, and not the semis going around. I mean, I, I don't know.
Nathaniel said that, in full implementation of the full plan that we've kind of, we're putting together here, once you kind of, we start, if we get to the point we can do the bulbouts and bring the pedestrian islands out, those, it kind of acts as a traffic calming device as well when the pedestrians are kind of out, you know, at the edge of the parking spots, and it's kind of almost.
Instead of a fifty-foot wide roadway, you're looking at, you're looking at a twenty, twenty-foot, twenty-two-foot wide roadway, and just like a roundabout does, it's a traffic calming device, like Andy said. Yeah, it makes, it makes you think you need to slow down because, because right now you have a wide open shot all the way through town, and it encourages speeding, basically.
Is people, is people about parallel parking, is that not going to bother them?
We should, I think one of the things with the parallel is your larger vehicles are naturally going to go to the angle parking spots because it's easier. Your smaller cars will get into the parallel spots.
And your older people are going to, I will go to the angle. I hate the parallel parking.
Which, it shouldn't be bad, the parallel spots for a, for a car to get into are where over the minimum that the FHWA sets, so we actually have a larger spot than even the smallest spots out there.
Are you thinking they can pull in and back up, and then pull up back in?
You shouldn't affect the other lane of traffic, parallel parking, as you do back and out into the road angle parking right now, so.
Part of the plan, I mean, if it involved raised crosswalks, wouldn't that slow the, slow the cars down as well?
That's, yeah.
From the pedestrian islands, raised crosswalks?
Raised crosswalks, that would be.
Probably, probably, it's like a speed bump or a speed hum, like they call them, would never be approved for a primary route.
I know, I've already asked. I asked, I wanted to put some portable ones.
So elevated crosswalks are not allowed on those.
Okay.
I don't think.
All right.
Are textured, possibly.
No, we have not.
Now, textured is one of the things that we are looking into.
Okay.
Let's try it and see.
Let's, let's see what we got here. Joe, you want to restate it again? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
To implement effectively the program that's been presented tonight for a minimum of ninety days, beginning sometime after the first of January, as the weather permits for the, for the tape, and to have five thousand dollars from the appropriate budget available for the cost thereof, and give at least ninety days and see how it goes, with adjustments to be made during that ninety days as we believe is prudent.
Just second, second? All right, all in favor? Okay, guys, you got your marching orders there. Okay, we have one item, non-B.
We did non-B already?
A, I'm sorry, sure looked like a B. It's a minimum housing code violation at three seventy-three West Main Street. Council, I think you're going to tell us about this.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, everybody's favorite topic again, the minimum housing code. This particular violation is a more minor one. Those of you who have been on the board for some period of time will recall, we have done a few of these enforcements where we, where it's a deteriorated, not dilapidated structure, so it can be repaired for less than half of the value. That's what I understand the nature of the violations to be. In this instance, this owner has been given plenty of due process in terms of notice, hearing, notice that the violations are there and to fix them within ninety days and is not done. So, but the resolution that I'm asking to approve tonight would just be my instruction to go get an order from Superior Court to, to enforce the minimum housing.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I would like to make that motion.
Okay, a second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right, now that we're down to announcements now, I'll run through these real quick unless you want to do it. Town Hall offices will be closed Friday, November the tenth, in observance of Veterans Day, but the Veterans Day celebration will take place on the square on November the eleventh, beginning with the parade at ten-thirty, and then the program begins at eleven. All right, after the, after the Veterans Day program, they're going to ask everybody to move across the street for the presentation of the charters of freedom that are those big things that have been put out there, see Constitution, the Declaration of Independence and all of that, and the county has asked that right after the Veterans Day, that they move over, and that's scheduled for twelve. Then at twelve forty-five, they're going to have the unveiling of the veterans portraits at the art gallery. That was scheduled for twelve, but because of the conflict, it's been moved to twelve forty-five. Veterans, well, this is already all down here, isn't it? Okay. Town Hall offices will be closed Thursday, November the twenty-third, and Friday, November the twenty-fourth, for Thanksgiving. Winter Wonderland will be serendipity November the twenty-fifth and serendipity December the second. We have a joint meeting coming up with Macon County, the Town of Franklin, the Town of Hollins, on Tuesday, November the twenty-eighth, six o'clock, in the Robert C. Carpenter Building, I assuming it will be finished by then.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. It's, I'm not going to say anything. Pardon?
It's been, it's been finished.
Really? Is it open now? Okay, I thought maybe the bridge people were working on it, so. Okay, any further business? Anybody from the council's got anything they want to add? Anybody want to add anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second? All right, all in favor of adjournment?